Good morning, everybody, and welcome to this week's Board of Selectmen meeting. And as usual, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the public for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I ask everybody to keep standing for a few more moments, please? We have some sad announcements, and I just wanted to acknowledge we had three deaths in our Greenwich community family. First, I want to send our condolences to the Quasi family, Billy and Margaret. Margaret works in Parks and Rec. Their son Christopher unfortunately sadly passed away at age 25 over the weekend. Chris was a great, great young man. Loved baseball, loved his hometown and was down living in Tampa where he went to school. Also Detective Robert McKernan, who had just recently retired a few months ago, died at the age of 49, leaving a wife and three kids. It was a smiling face and really well liked by all who knew him here in town. And Lieutenant Jimmy Fahey, who we all know in many different capacities, he was a had a stellar police career. And in 1974 was called to an emergency on I-95 where there was a home invasion. People were gathered in a home and mourning the loss of a loved one. And 12 people in there were held hostage by two men with guns. And when they left that house, they were apprehended on the highway. And a call went out for help. The first person that showed up was Lieutenant Jimmy Fahey, who had a rifle pointed at him and was told to drop his gun. He did not. Gun battle ensued and it didn't work out well for the for the people who were for the criminals in this case and for the for his bravery. And his performance, he was given the Medal of Honor and the John Clark Award. And was promoted to Sergeant at that time. He had and later in life had dedicated many, many years to the Fraternal Order of Redmond and to the Democratic Town Committee, as well as a few other organizations, just a wonderful person. So if we could have a moment of silence for all three of these men. Thank you. Okay, going on to agenda, item number two on the agenda, the approval of minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting on May 28th. Is there a motion to approve?
I motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from May 28, 2020.
I second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo votes yay.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Thank you. Minutes approved. Is there a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting on June 4, 2020?
I motion that we approve the minutes from the Board of Selectmen's special meeting held June 4, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Both of those meetings minutes are approved. We'll go right into updates. I will give the First Selectmen's updates now. The Greenwich train station building is going to be open this week. So we will get a notice out there on that. So I think it's already been in the papers. Also want to let you know that received an update from the Greenwich Plaza Committee concerning one or two Greenwich Plaza, as well as the railroad station and the air rights issue. A proposal was received by the committee and they communicated it to me. And they are formalizing a response right now, so we will in the coming days have that and we'll have that to discuss at the next meeting. But they a big shout out to every single person on that committee for doing a lot of work and and certainly having the towns backs on that and looking at any and every way to to get something done there. So we thank them and we look we look forward to their their response and to sharing that with everybody. Parks and Recreation Updates, as you know, June 10. Yesterday, we went seven to seven at the beach and now people can go and lie on the beach. We're doing it in no more groups of no more than five and spread out by 15 feet from each other. We don't want any repeats of what we saw in the state of Florida and which is now received a big spike in the cases, but we don't know if it just could be from more testing, but it's better to be safe than sorry. So we're not jumping to conclusions, but we want to make sure people stay safe. So we will be monitoring that. I will be meeting with Director Siciliano tomorrow about some other issues, which we will release in the coming days. The opening reopenings. Greenwich Avenue has been going, it's been really a lot of fun. People are loving it. They're sending videos and screenshots of what they're doing. We're going to be adjusting that a little bit, that policy for the bottom of the avenue. But lots of lots of important and significant and exciting changes, some on a permanent basis on the way to the avenue. The money we put in the budget looks like it was not cut the other night to do the first bump out on Lewis Street. So the transformation of Greenwich Avenue, which I'm guessing will be take place in the next three to 24 months has started. So exciting stuff. We met again yesterday with the merchants in Old Greenwich, not as many transformations there, but there are some and there are some really, really nice ones that people are going to like. We're getting information back. As I speak, I there's a lot of emails in my inbox. So soon as this meeting is over, that's what I'll be doing the rest of the day. But we asked for a little bit more feedback from them. So in Old Greenwich, just so get an idea what we're doing, we're talking about possibly going out in the back parking lots for those merchants that have that room. But also to have a visual presence on the sidewalks. So when people are going to the beach, whether it be normal beachgoers or somebody in town just for a reunion, we want them to see a different feel, have a different feel, see a different look to Old Greenwich and entice them to get out of their car and and go to those merchants and those restaurants and then to see that there's actually a back to this. And, you know, we could, we'd like to see this be more of a permanent warm weather transformation and we can, you know, take it step by step and see what the people truly want there. But I think there's a there seems to be a broad consensus right now about that and some other things. There's some temporary solutions there in the next few months to get the businesses jump started. Spoke, there was some concern about since the village there, even though those businesses are 12 months a year businesses, they're really their main time where they do a lot of their their business is in the summer. So spoke with DPW, who's nice enough to tell us that most of the projects are done. But in the future, unless there's an emergency, they would do their best to get the projects done prior to Memorial Day and after Labor Day, unless there's going to be an overlap or like set of an emergency. So lots of good things on tap there. I do want to give update on the COVID-19 figures. Right now Greenwich Hospital has six positive COVID patients, only one in intensive care. They continue to test approximately 70 outpatients per day. And they're currently opened up all their outpatient services. So that's that's still going very well. We thank Diane Kelly and the and the Greenwich Hospital for getting this over to us. And I know Dan Wurzow had sent something over about some numbers there and I don't know if I've received them yet, but no, I haven't.
Yes, Fred, you do have them.
I don't, I yeah, I asked for the other email address. I don't see it there. So Barb, if you could read those, that would be terrific.
Okay, it looks like from Nathaniel Witherell, they have four current COVID cases in-house. They have 41 patients that are recovering and a confirmed total of 59 patients. And they do not have any suspected cases at this time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Barb, and thanks, Dan Wurzow. And finally, in response to a lot of the the protests we've seen and the gatherings, Chief, Chief Eevee and I have spoken and we're looking at maybe doing some type of a webinar and also gathering community leaders throughout the town where every segment of our society can be represented, even if nothing's going on and everything's great, just to have a constant communication and dialogue, we think is a good thing. We do know that our our police department is one of 39 in the whole state that's been accredited. They're looking for an even more significant accreditation and coming months. So things are going well there, but certainly we we want to be proactive, certainly and keep up the communication and improve it where we where we can. I've been asked a lot about body cameras, which I've always been supportive of, and I think the chief is too. I can't speak for for prior administrations. I know this year we just had one crack at it. We thought there were some other priorities we needed to take care of in the budget and with nothing going on with the police department being heavily engaged in the community, we didn't put it in the budget this year. I suspect you will see that in the next few years, two, three, four years, whatever, I think you will see them. I think it helps not only the citizens of our community, but also our police officers. I don't see, I really don't see the downside to it. I know there are some people have concerns about privacy and all that, but I think the positives do outweigh the negatives. So I do think they are coming, but I don't know when, but they're, you know, it's a discussion that the the community needs to have. So with that, I will turn it over. I'm looking at the screen. So I'll start with you, select woman, rated for your updates.
Thanks, Fred. I don't really have too much of an update, but wanted to give a chance or have an opportunity to speak about my personal thoughts with regard to, you know, what's going on in our country with racial injustice. I know Fred and Jill, you spoke at the RTM meeting. I was a little less coordinated. I was trying to be connected to that. Some of you might know I was away for the weekend dealing with the family matter and so it's just a little out of pocket. And interestingly enough, I had to fly to to deal with this issue and I was on the plane reflecting and they tell you to put your own oxygen mask on before helping others. So I thought that was an interesting statement because I felt as I self reflect, I need to look within myself first and understand where my biases might be. So I need to learn and perhaps unlearn before I can speak out against the injustice I see others portraying. So that's what I'm personally doing. And I like Fred, you've made the comment, we need to listen, we need to learn, we need to lead. Of course, Black Lives Do Matter and I'm fully supportive and committed to doing those three things to help stop racial injustice in our town, in our state, in our country, in our world.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Much appreciated. And select person Oberlander, updates. Good morning.
Thank you. Lauren, thank you for that. I will repeat my sent my comments from the other night, but echo yours and really want to send the message to our constituents and residents that Greenwich is a place where all should feel welcome and comfortable and to reach out to us if the town can partner in any way or address any of the injustices that that people are experiencing. I do feel that it is something that we all need to focus on on a daily basis and and change the baseline for so many residents. In addition to those issues which have consumed much of our our thoughts and our emotion for the last few weeks, the Sustainability Committee is continuing its efforts. We had since our last Board of Selectmen meeting, a a day of celebration of cycling put together by one of our residents, Bob DeAngelo. And I know a lot of people took advantage of Pedal Greenwich. I got the opportunity to ride with Bob and try out some new roads as well. And anyone who wants to ride, we're always looking, I'm always looking for somebody to keep me company. I'm a little slower than Bob, so it's, it was great and that's part of the aspect of sustainability that we're looking to make the community more bicycle friendly, people sensitive to cyclists who may be on the road, whether they are experienced or beginners. And there are some new signage signs put up to raise awareness that you might encounter a cyclist as you're going along. So please check them out as well and drive and ride safely, wearing a helmet, of course. The Sustainability Committee also is a wants to commend waste-free Greenwich and the Greenwich Recycling Advisory Board for all the work that they have put in. In the last few weeks, we've seen a launch of the food scraps recycling program that many of you might have read about in the newspaper or participating in as well. And there'll be a ribbon cutting tomorrow and it's really very exciting to see how Greenwich is moving forward with waste reduction. Later in the meeting, we'll be talking about a textile recycling program. And all of these efforts have really been initiated by our town volunteers and and really changing the way we experience our community. Lastly, would be on working with the continuing to monitor the situation for the nonprofits and the COVID grants as we move to the next phase and to see how people recover businesses and also the community. And so I hope to be giving a fuller report on that in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for saluting all our volunteers. They're really really enthused about it and we've got some exciting things going on there in the environmental field. So thank them and thank you for all you do there. And if I if we take you up on your invitation to ride, do we have to, do we have to notice that? I don't want to get in trouble. All right, I have to get a bike first, so.
I don't talk much when I ride.
Okay. All right, thanks, Jill. All right, before we go to new business, we have one item on old business on the appointment, update of the appointment of interim chief Bob Kick and Attorney Vin Marino. Morning, Vin.
Good morning. How are you? I'm going to state with certainty with respect to your last question, this is the first selectman knows that is definitely not conducting town business, so you don't have to notice your bicycle ride. I wanted to be clear on at least something today.
Thank you. Well, take it. Thank you.
So with respect to the inquiry last time, so I kind of opined that the first selectmen's appointment of the interim fire chief was appropriate under section 217 because it was an administrative function. It was not an appointment of a permanent fire chief, which would be covered by section 218 and the section that covers the fire chief. I'm sorry, I'm thumbing through my my charter and my tab fell off. But there is a section in the charter that specifically covers fire chief, the fire chief. And clearly that is an appointment of the Board of Select. But I in the law department to see A if there were, there was historical data to address this or what their thoughts were. And the consensus, unanimous consensus of the law department was that this was an administrative function and the first selectman did have that authority. That being said, we all agreed that this is a close call because there is language in the charter that suggests that all departments of department heads must go through the Board of Selectmen based upon the recommendation of the first selectmen. And you know, the the analysis is that way. However, we we ultimately came to the conclusion that this was an administrative function on an interim basis that the first selectmen's appointment was proper.
Okay, I want to thank you for that, for the responding to the inquiry. Also, I want to thank selectwoman Oberlander for bringing up something that was not even on our radars and certainly, you know, things that have been done that way in the past. And while my concerns are still there about taking, you know, away that right of a first select woman or second select man, it was, I think, going back and forth, I thought it was, you can make a case for either one of those. So I appreciate the the opportunity to to think about something that in the past, I don't think, I don't know, I wasn't on those Board of Selectmen's, but I don't know if they had this much scrutiny. So that's, I think that's a good thing. So I appreciate your work and certainly the selectwomen's bringing it up and asking for an opinion. Jill, did you want to say?
I did, and I want to thank Vin. We did have a prior conversation, the tenor, which was slightly different than his announcement right now. But I do think it is, I don't 100% agree with the presentation. As he knows, I believe that there's a, if you're going to be a strict constructionalist about the charter, there would be no reason to have both sections of the charter, including the filling of a vacancy in the fire office. The interim appointment is indeed, in my view, a filling of a vacancy, both in in characteristic and in appointment and also, but but to me, it is on this issue, a you know, a legal argument that I'm happy to have with him further offline. My intent was to cast my vote in favor of now, I think the title is Acting or Interim Fire Chief Bob Kick, to recognize and thank him for stepping forward and his dedication to the town and to the department and to his courtesy for, I'm hoping you can hear me this time, Bob, actually. Can you hear me?
I can. I got booted out, but I'm back.
His courtesy to to me as a town official and other town officials throughout, actually, the years that I've known him. But less so about his courtesy is his capability and responsiveness and knowledge about the department and the town. And so I'm going to ask for, again, for a vote to ratify the appointment of Bob Kick as the acting interim fire chief. I believe it is a charter right, but even if it weren't, I'd like the opportunity to vote in favor and to recognize that he is so well deserving of this position. So that is a motion to vote, which would require a second, and I'm going to ask one of my two colleagues to recognize that motion.
Okay, seeing none, your, that motion is sealed, but your points are well taken. Again, I'm not going to repeat my concerns. I think we need to move on, but I certainly, I've been on record with my concerns. So I do thank you again for stating your your opinion on it and
and and I would like to add, I was waiting for the interpretation. So again, it's not a disagreement that we should have nominated Bob Kick. I echo your thoughts, Jill, and I understand the almost two sides of the coin with the two different, you know, paragraphs, interim and permanent. But again, not wanting to create a precedent. If this was an emergency situation, that's kind of how I read it and felt it. So I'll, that's why I did not second it. I don't want to read that in the paper.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, I am, I don't necessarily agree with the interpretation that was offered, but I will, but I recognize that my motion does not have a second.
Okay.
And the law department takes no issue with your disagreement.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Okay, seeing no other items in the old business category, new business, which is the modification to the temporary closure of the lower half of Greenwich Avenue is Ben's on here. I just want to say that we did, when we did this plan, temporary policies with a look towards the future and more permanent ones. We knew that we're going to have to do some amendments and some adjustments and we asked for some feedback and we got some. It's been overwhelmingly positive, but the the only concerns we had really were coming from a few merchants.
Emergency, I'm actually on multiple calls right now.
Okay, so we we responded, one of the merchants who had an issue early on on the bottom half actually responded this week that her business, there was an uptick in business. But that wasn't the case for all that we heard from. So even if 75% are doing really well there, we really have to address the 25% that aren't. We don't want to hurt anybody. So we're, that's why the modification is before us. So with that, I will call on our town administrator, Ben Branyan. Ben, good morning.
Good morning, all. So we are requesting the Board of Selectmen modify the temporary closure of Greenwich Avenue that was approved at your May 28 meeting. There are two maps included in your agenda packet. I would be referring to pages eight and nine of the PDF. And essentially, there are five modifications that we're looking for. It's a physical barrier, barriers that are currently at the intersection of Havenwire Place, Arch Street and Greenwich Avenue. Those will be removed and traffic will be allowed to flow unrestricted. Those physical barriers, along with the controlled access that we have instituted for emergency access and deliveries, will be moved just south of the intersection of Greenwich Avenue and Greg Street. Nodes will be installed on the newly opened section for restaurants. I have filed applications for outdoor dining. Fawcett Place will change from a full dead end at Greenwich Avenue to allow for traffic to exit Greenwich Avenue onto Fawcett Place. The traffic barrier will remain to stop traffic entering Greenwich Avenue from Fawcett Place. And lastly, Greg Street will be restored to its prior one-way status. And this will allow traffic to exit Greenwich Avenue as well. We believe, as Fred already mentioned, that these modifications will address the concerns we receive from the businesses regarding parking, customer access and delivery issues. If the Board of Selectmen approves these modifications, Public Works will be able to implement these by tomorrow, June 12. And the last piece of information I just want to bring up is we've, in the last meeting, we referenced phases two and three. We believe that the nodes that the Board of Selectmen approved at your last meeting are meeting the needs of the businesses in the upper section of Greenwich Avenue. So at this time, there's no additional changes anticipated for the balance of the avenue. That being said, we continue to listen to businesses and observe both traffic and pedestrian flow. And any changes needed will certainly bring back to the Board of Selectmen. But we believe these five modifications shown in pages eight and nine will address the majority of the concerns we received. And Deputy Commissioner Jim Michael is joining me as well for any questions you may have on the modifications.
Okay, Jill?
Thank you, Ben. So just, just to help me understand, so you're opening up the top half north of Greg Street to one-way traffic and parking, but keeping the bottom, that's the area south of Greg Street closed to traffic as a pure pedestrian walk, you know, access.
Correct.
We also have somebody in the audience, Scott, don't know what Scott's last name is, that has his hand raised.
I believe that's Scott Mitchell, but I'm not sure.
Good morning, all. Scott Mitchell from Richards. Thank you.
Good morning, all, Scott Mitchell from Richards, thank you. What was the, what is the reasoning for keeping the lower half or the lower part of the avenue closed to pedestrian when the feedback from what you have, I think, very smartly done on the top with all the bump outs for the restaurants, while allowing parking where there is parking and automobile traffic where it's open to continue?
Sure, I'll take a crack at that, and then Jim and Ben can weigh in too, if they'd like. So well, we listened to the merchants who had some, who, like you, actually liked what we were doing, but were concerned about the daytime hours, and you and I have had these conversations too. So we've, by doing this modification and stopping at Grig Street, it took care of all of those, including people on Grig Street that had some concerns, but again, are very supportive of this. If you, we walked the avenue a few times now this week, the bottom part, that's still, and if you go to the bottom where Michelangelo is, we're allowing people to turn right from Railroad Avenue to go into that parking lot. So they're going against the grain in a cordon off lane, and there's parking near, so they can access it there. As we walked the other day, Scott, it was amazing, because some of the merchants who are not restaurants had their furniture out and were inviting people at the restaurants to come over and have a drink on their furniture, and go into their stores, and they were doing it, and they loved it. So we haven't heard anything negative from that part yet. So we will, again, we're going to monitor it, but so far, so good. Because it's mostly restaurants down there. There is, there are some, just not many, but the merchants we spoke to seem to like it.
I just worry that the, if you, I sat with Bobby Walker on the Board of Ed steps for about an hour and a half yesterday, and the traffic north of Starbucks on Greenwich Avenue, if you stand there for more than 10 minutes, it's atrocious, because people come down and they don't know what to do, left, firehouse, right, like go down Arch Street, I can't, what am I doing? I worry that you're just taking that challenge of traffic backup and just pushing it down another block, and with, so, and you have such a functional traffic light at the end of the avenue where you can go straight, right, or left, it works well, it's time, all the engineering, Ben, on that's terrific. I just worry that you're going to have a continued backup, and you've got a lot of retailers, all those art galleries, I could name them all, because they're all in my backyard. It's still, you know, we don't have parking on really the eastern side of back of Greenwich Avenue, there really is no parking for people to go park and then walk unless you're walking far. So I just, I think it's a concern, and listen, try it and we'll look at it, but I think you're just going to take the challenge of back to traffic by Starbucks now and just move it another block down the street. But thank you for listening.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you for always weighing in with some good ideas and pro and con. Someone did email a question about the discussion about the building of a garage behind where I think Harvest Restaurant is and behind Diane's Books, which I know we've had discussions over the many years about that. There is nothing right now planned as far as that goes, but we saw that email, so I just want to get it out there. And also, the owner of Diane's Books called again, or her daughter and one of the employees about Grig Street, but we've, we're about to vote on that now, so I think that's addressed. But the parking garage, if you're, the person's listening out there, with all the changes that are being planned and all the ideas about to address parking, that particular location, there is nothing on the table right now. So just to, I just wanted to answer that.
Diane's Books also has her, I'm going to assume it's her hand raised, if we want to recognize Diane. And Scott, you could go ahead and lower your hand if you don't want to speak again. Thank you.
Go ahead, Diane's Books, can you unmute yourself, please?
Okay, I'm, okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You're muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Margot O'Brien, Diane Garrett's daughter, and we appreciate your listening to our concerns. However, the remainder of Greenwich Avenue that remains closed is critical to our customers for parking. Without full parking restored, we don't have a hope of surviving this. That's just how it is. Even with the full Greenwich Avenue as it was in the past, our customers could not find parking and would give up and order their books on Amazon. So even with a full restoration of Greenwich Avenue, there is a continuing issue of parking. So I just want to put that on the record, that it really needs to be looked at if small businesses are to survive in Greenwich. And we were the ones who raised the question about a parking garage behind Diane's Books, because, because we are at the bottom of the avenue, the parking is taken up by commuters, so it really isn't available. So maybe there's a system with the parking meters that it says, you know, for, you know, Greenwich Avenue only, or one hour, or something, some solution that could be helpful. We don't have a solution, we're looking to you for a solution so that we can remain to serve the town of Greenwich. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. And I went, took a walk by your store yesterday, and I noticed, I know you had called in with a concern slash complaint about the landlord allowing tables that blocked your entrance. I did not see those tables here yesterday, so has that been resolved?
That has been resolved, so thank you very much. I appreciate that. So whoever deemed to remove them, but that was very problematic. So step one was the removal of the tables, and now step two for us, and again, you know, I'm only speaking for us, is we would love the restoration of the whole avenue for parking for our customers.
Is there an opportunity, because we do have less commuters right now, I know my son took the train in New York City yesterday, there were like five people on it, to take the Grig Street lot and not have it available for commuters for this time period, just to help alleviate some of the, you know, issues or concerns? I'm just thinking out loud, maybe it's already been thought of.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you repeat that for?
I was just wondering if it had been thought of to make the Grig Street lot not available to commuters, because right now, people are still not commuting into the city. I just use the example, my son went in yesterday and there were five people on the train at rush hour. So I wonder if, just during this time period, while we have Greenwich Avenue closed to vehicular traffic, to make the lot for merchant shopping only? I don't know how we enforce it, maybe it's through, as Margot mentioned, some sort of, you know, timer, but prevent commuters from using the lot.
That's interesting. Why not, if you're around tomorrow, we could take a walk down there and take the area and start looking at it. And, yeah, yes, this would be temporary, but we could also, I think we have to take this whole crisis and see what, not only we do temporarily to help these businesses, but what we can do permanently to enhance the look and feel of our downtown. So let's, if you're around tomorrow, it's going to be hot.
Yeah, I know, let's do it after the ribbon cutting ceremony for the scraps. Yeah.
With scraps, okay, yeah, there's a 11 o'clock graduation at JC, so maybe we could do maybe 12 o'clock if, I don't know if Jill's around or whatever. Love to go down there and just take a look and see, because I think there's only solutions.
Yeah, just to add to that discussion, it is, right now, at this time, so critically important that we support our businesses. Behavior change takes a long time, as we all know, and part of the allure of this was, in addition to responding to a way to get our residents out in a healthy manner, was to make our community more pedestrian friendly. And so I would ask that the Department of Public Works and our town administrator look at whether a, whether we can continue with a summer month evening pedestrian access way in some way, whether it be on part of the avenue or on the lower part of the avenue as well, and at the same time, recognizing the concerns of our, the small businesses and merchants, that we do need a more holistic approach to parking and access and transportation in and around our downtown. Looking at a temporary measure is one thing, but parking's been an issue for years in this town, and maybe now's the time when we have fewer commuters and our Parking Services Department could take a, you know, a look at what are some of the, what are some of the opportunities that would make access more reasonable, and as we see what that proposal is from the Ashworth Company on the redevelopment, that might make commuter parking also more readily available, and take a look at all of that at the same time.
Yes, thank you, Jill. And yeah, and as I was saying before, everything we're doing now is with an eye towards the future. So we put money in the budget to bump out those curbs, and we're trying, that's the whole idea, is to make it pedestrian friendly, and we're even, you know, talking about the possibility of having a trolley leave Greenwich Town Hall every 30 minutes. That would be free to residents, that would be the idea, and to try and pay for that through private funds and maybe redeploy an employee of the town, so it's cost neutral. I know every, they do one every 30 minutes at Harbor Point, and it seems to work really well, we've talked about it for years. So this would help with the traffic situation too, and we're also going to see, I think we're going to be seeing people working remotely from Town Hall one or two days a week, so there should be more spaces available there. So yeah, I think this is absolutely, I think we, all three of us and everybody in the administration has been on board since day one, that we not only put in place temporary measures to help these businesses, but also, how can we make our town much more of a destination and much more attractive than it already is? And it already is a great destination for so many, but how do we make it even better? And I think, I think we're all on the same page here, and so that's why there's so many good ideas and we're going to hear more. We haven't even, I don't even think we've heard half of them yet. So that's why this is a constant involvement, and so I thank Margot and Scott for calling in and everybody who's been emailing. And also, if you, if you have time, you know, next week, we can notice it, we can get the full board down to Old Greenwich and maybe even go up to Glenville, because they're looking there now too, some things, and just to get a feel for what's going on and what can be done and to get everybody's take on it.
Sure. Margot, your hand is still raised, so I didn't know if you wanted to speak again, if not.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to address that we've been talking with Lynn of Linens, and we agree with her that Greenwich Avenue is pedestrian friendly, the sidewalks are fantastic, they're widely used, there is, we both feel, and this is just two people's opinions, that we are pedestrian friendly. And the only way small businesses like Lynn of Linens and Diane's Books is to survive is with parking, period. If our customers cannot get to us, we will close down. We were mandated to close down for two months, and that was extremely financially difficult for us. Now with reduced parking, any pedestrian closure of the avenue takes away parking. Any parking that is reduced means that the viability of our businesses is jeopardized. It's that stark. The rents on Greenwich Avenue, our rent is $11,500, that's just the rent. So I just wanted you to, and a book costs $20, so if you just do the math, you can see the volume of books that we need to sell to just even pay our rent. So we're talking about like the survival here, so I just want you to realize that it's fantastic, these are all great ideas, but it's just so grim for us right now. We're, I would like Greenwich to maybe tackle this issue when the retailers are strong. We are not strong. At one point, there were so many retail closures on Greenwich Avenue because of the rent issue, then the COVID issue, then the close down issue. We've had a triple whammy of negative things that we have had no control over. And, you know, we love Greenwich, and I think our business is one of the reasons people do come to the avenue. And we are just reaching out because we'd like the town to support us and help us survive and continue serving people that come to Greenwich and the residents of Greenwich. Thank you.
Well, we thank you, and as somebody that's been a customer of your store over the years from time to time, I appreciate all you do, and certainly we want to address your concerns. We do feel that we could make Greenwich Avenue a lot more pedestrian friendly, we've heard it from not only the residents en masse, but from many, many merchants. So I think it's incumbent upon us really to, and I think you and everybody else would be a beneficiary of that. So, but we do, we, you know, in our plans, we do have, you know, we are going to address parking, which as you know, is not an easy thing, but we've only been in office a few months, and we're committed to taking on all these, these issues and addressing them. So again, let's stay in contact and thank you again for your calls and emails and for calling in here today. Thank you, okay. With that, we have to vote, so is there, sorry?
I make a motion that we approve the modification to the temporary closure of Greenwich Avenue.
I would second that. All those in favor? Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes, but with requests that they consider whether a nighttime opening up at the top is feasible.
When you say that, I mean, when you, I'm not following.
Oh, what I had mentioned before, so we're changing the, allowing a traffic flow down Greenwich, the.
Oh, to match the.
North of Grig Street, whether, once the merchants are closed as a temporary measure in the summer, whether that might be something we could consider in the evening to expand the pedestrian way.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's all, that's all being planned now. Again, we want it from the top to the bottom, the bottom of it, the part of it, just because there were so many restaurants there in that one block there, that's, we've heard for years, and it seemed to make a lot of sense, absolutely, and it's going to continue to evolve.
Yeah.
Go for it. So thank you. Okay, so.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, so it's three to nothing, thank you. And we'll be back to, in the next meeting to revisit this and see how it's working. New business, item B, the Fairco Green Tree Recycling Location Agreement with the Town of Greenwich, Town Attorney Ben Marino.
Yes, how are you?
Hi, Ben.
Is, looking to see if Julie is, is Julie in like the waiting room? If not, I will explain the initiative and the contract.
Unless she's in via a telephone number, there's two people, 1-4073 is the last four digits, the other one is 6003, and I think it's star nine to raise your hand if you're phone only.
That's correct.
Yes, it doesn't, doesn't appear so, Ben.
Okay, just pull the contract up. So what you have before you is a location agreement with Fairco Green Tree Recycling, which is an entity that is going to be placing recycling bins at agreed locations in public buildings and going to be what people can put into these recycling bins, I'm going to call them, I have not actually seen them, so I don't know the size of them, but assuming since it's gone through Public Works, they're of an appropriate size that does not interfere with any of the town's business. And again, all the locations have been agreed to, I believe, by Public Works. And basically, people can put textile products like clothes, sneakers, things other than what you would generally put in your recycling bin, newspapers, maybe compost, depending on what we're recycling. And what they then do is they collect these textiles and they sell them, they actually make money off of the recycling of these materials. And what they are going to do is they're going to give back to the town 10% of all proceeds that are generated through this initiative. The intention of the donation back to the town is that the monies go to RAB, which is the Greenwich Recycling Advisory Board, which is a subcommittee that is under the First Selectmen's. that is under the First Selectman's purview and reports to the First Select. And so the intention again is to support RAB in their initiatives with educating the public on recycling. And there was some concern on the donation of the 10%, but initially, the way the contract read, they were going to give the money directly to RAB. I felt some concern about that because, again, being a subcommittee, RAB does not have its own bank account. And, you know, there should be oversight. I don't know if these monies are going to be $100 or $1 million. I suspect closer to 100 or $1,500 over the course of a fiscal year. But, so I worked with the Finance Department, and the Finance Department is going to put up a process so that the revenue can be received and distributed to RAB on a request basis. Like, it'll likely flow through the First Selectman's budget. So that, again, so the monies are accounted for and are not, I don't believe this is an auditing issue, but I just wanted to avoid any concern about misappropriation of the funds. So what you have before you, again, is a one-page document, it's a location agreement. And essentially, I don't know if you want me to go over the material terms, but essentially, the town is agreeing to allow Fairco to locate these bins on public property. Fairco is agreeing to indemnify and hold the town harmless should any damage result as a, as a result of the location of these boxes. The town can revoke, the agreement is revocable based on whether or not RAB or the town decide that this is not working out. So it's revocable at any time and for any reason. And again, Fairco will reimburse the town for any cost of any damages related to the placement of the property. Fairco will have insurance and provide a stiff gut of insurance that provides insurance coverage with limits of $1 million for occurrence and $2 million for aggregate coverage. The town is to be named as an additional insured on the policy. The town reserves the right to designate the locations of the bins and to change the locations of the bins if such change is necessary. And the paragraph nine provides that they're going to pay back to the town, I said 10%, which I believe is still true, but it's 10 cents, it's actually 10 cents a pound is going to be paid back to the town on a monthly basis. So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions, but I believe that covers the material terms of the agreement. And I'd like to thank Lieutenant Oberlander for her assistance.
Thank you, Ben. Just a, just a clarification, that the money that the 10 cents per pound would go back to RAB for their use, correct?
Right, well, again, it's, I felt that it was appropriate to come to the town, and the intention is for the town to be a flow-through. So RAB, you know, the intent, and again, it's the First Selectman, this is a subcommittee that reports to you directly. So my thought was, and the Finance Department's thought was, is that this revenue should go to the First Selectman's departmental budget so that you have authority over it, and you're an executive member of this subcommittee. So conceptually, I would think RAB would say, for example, we want to do education and we want to buy posters. They would have revenue of, let's say, $1,500, and they could spend up to $1,500 through your department. You would make a request for that the town pay for the expense.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. It makes sense. And just so people know what the intent is there, much appreciated. Thank you, and thank you, Jill, for your assistance with that.
Does RAB have their own account? Or I could be mistaken, or does Greenwich Green and Clean, are they the fiduciary for RAB? I don't know that RAB has their own, that they're fiduciary of their own, you know, monies. Does anybody know that?
To your core question, it actually took me some time to determine what RAB was. Initially, I thought it was an independent body. They, I could not find out online, but with some diligence, ultimately, I discovered that it was a subcommittee of the, basically of the First Selectman's Department. So I checked with the Finance Department. Subcommittees do not have independent bank accounts that they have exclusive control over. Sometimes there are accounts separate and apart from the general fund that are set up that, you know, for a specific purpose. But in this regard, we thought that the easiest way of handling it would be to simply create it as revenue that would flow through the First Selectman's office. But again, it is the intent here that 100% of the revenue derived from this joint venture is utilized by RAB for its general purposes.
Thanks. And, and just to, to add to the discussion, thank you, Ben, for your work on this. The intent behind the, the agreement and also the placement of the textile recycling bins is an effort to ensure that we are moving as much out of our trash waste stream and allowing our community to be more trash sensitive, waste reduction. And this allows us to take textiles that are not able to be donated out of the trash waste stream, which will reduce our overall trash costs and also will give us a better footprint on the environmental scale. So again, thank you to RAB and Waste Free Greenwich for all of their efforts to bring this forward. And we look forward to seeing what the impact is.
Great, thank you. All right, so I think we're, we've discussed it and seem to be all in accord. So is there a motion to accept the agreement with Fairco Green Tree Recycling and the location agreement with the town?
I motion that we accept the Fairco Green Tree Recycling Location Agreement.
I'll second that motion, Jill Oberlander.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo, yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, it is approved. Thank you very much, thank you, Ben. Then now going to last two items on new business. I believe we have to go into executive session.
Before we do that, do we want to take the appointments? So I don't know if we needed to amend the agenda to do it out of order so that we don't have to come back in? We just do that part?
You will need to be coming back in from the executive session to vote on the items that you will be discussing in the executive session.
My only struggle is I have a hard stop at 12:45, so I, I just want to be prepared for that. And I think, because I have the motions for the nominations, in case we don't come back out until after 12:45.
I'm going to ask that we, I think that these items, they'll probably be not as long as some of our other ones. And since I'm not sure which nominations you're putting forward, I'd rather do it after the executive session.
Okay, and we only have two, two items to pick up. Okay, so I guess we'll make a motion to, is there a motion to go into, to adjourn, to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation and our settlement of claims.
Lauren Raven, second.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo, yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren.
Okay, everybody, we are going into executive session, we'll be back in a little bit. We, is there a motion to accept the? What do I do with it?
I have it in front of me, please. If I just read the claim numbers, it's for you? Yep, I'll do that. I make a motion to accept workers' compensation claim number 0160156 versus the town of Greenwich.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Great, okay.
The next one, I make a motion to accept workers' compensation claims. These are a lot of numbers, 98145081, 0020603, 0062977, 0080736, and 012968 versus the town of Greenwich.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, both settlements are approved. And now we have one remaining item.
Appointments?
Yes.
Yes, so I have two appointments. We actually have another eleven to do. I just need to reconcile the information we received yesterday afternoon about the majority minority representation on the boards and commissions to make sure that we're compliant there. So the first one is to nominate Rob Siska as a returning member of the Board of Ethics for a term ending June 30th, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo is yes?
Jill Oberlander is yes.
Lauren Raven is yes.
Okay, three to nothing.
And the second one is to nominate Mary Shaw Marks as a new alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term ending October 31st, 2024.
I'll second that, Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, thank you, both approved, and we'll get to the other ones in the next meeting. Thanks for your work on that. So with that, I don't see any other business before the board. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Jill Oberlander, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Lauren Raven, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo, yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody, take care.
Thank you.
You later.
Thank you.